Good evening and welcome to the Buckland Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 25th. It's 5:00 PM. We do have one appointment this evening at 5:00 o'clock. We have Richard Martin from Franklin County Tech School, who's the superintendent to present. Remember what it was he was coming in for? Is this on your addition?
Just to update everyone on where we are with a proposed new building project and admissions and lottery, which is brand new. And just to try to like update everyone kind of where we're at. So that's what I would do. Could I make a request? Could I have my business manager, Liz Bouchard, come up?
Absolutely.
And so just given the situation, we, I know we don't have the overhead projector, but I'm gonna occasionally turn my screen around and we'll move on there. So just wanna get updated on where we are in the process. So why does Franklin County Tech need a new facility? I think that would be the question I would wanna ask first and foremost out of the gate. And I just wanted to update you on some of the things that have been going on at Franklin County Tech and some of it you may be familiar with 'cause you've heard us in other meetings over the last decade talking about some of these items. But now we're getting to the end of the useful life of the facility being 50 years old. And one of the big things that's happened to us is we have the electrical switchgear. And it was built by Federal Pacific. And so we have about 15 or 16 of those installed in our facility. If one of them goes down, there's about a two-month wait time to have it rebuilt and then, you know, put back in. If that would happen during the school year and one of those go down, we're out of school for two months. So we started to notice about a decade ago the flickering going on and off. So we had the, so we had the contractors come in, take a look at it and said, "Your electrical switchgear is beginning to fall." So we got together with the Building Ground Subcommittee and we decided at that point in time to have one built. We found a company that will be able to make it and then put it on site and have it as a holding patent. That process is over $100,000, just for that one switchgear. So we did it. When we had it delivered, by coincidence, two days later, the electrical switchgear that was flickering went out. It happened on a Friday, but we had something on standby and by Saturday night, we were back to full power. So that was a relief. Well, what do we have to do? Go out and spend another bunch of money to put another one and have it built and put it on standby? Well, that took about a month after that one and another switchgear went out. So we're constantly in this unending type of cycle with our electrical mechanical system. When we had the cost estimators do a run-through and find out how much would it cost to replace the whole thing, all the electrical switchgear in the building and all the upgrades associated with the electrical switchgear to be by code would come in the vicinity of $32 million. So we go, well, at that timeframe when that happened, I think I put my first application into the MSBA project. You know, we didn't hear back. We weren't approved or anything like that, but we had an application pending. Well, when you do the electrical mechanical systems, it's such a big structural cost and it's so invasive that it would trigger by code a new sprinkler system. We're grandfathered in. We don't have a sprinkler system in our facility. So that would be an estimated $8 million. Every year, you wait to put those types of systems with the cost had, the cost estimators have told us, you're gonna be paying 4% more labor each year and 4% more materials and supplies. Then we have a roof that we put two coatings on, one approximately a decade ago and then 15 years before that. So every 15 years, we put a new roof coating on. That's coming to the end of its life. We're already seeing the buckets beginning to go back into the hallways, but we can't put a third coating on. We're not allowed to by regulation. Once you get to that third coating, you have to do a complete tear-down and rebuild of the roof, which will take years in the existing facility because you have to think about it. You gotta tear down one part of the roof, move all those kids' equipment and everything to another part of the building, solify that, move kids back in and go to the next section. So it can take three, four, or five years before a new roof is actually put on. And that, and that estimate by the cost estimators, not by us, is $17 million. Then you got the abatement of hazardous materials. We got some dust collectors, a whole thing with doing the absolute minimum by not changing the educational structure of our building at all or addressing the OSHA needs that we're outdated on or the educational materials would be 75 million, 74, 75 million as of right now. And we would not be allowed to go out for a 30-year bond. We could only go out for a 15-year bond because when we talked to Unibank, they identified that they can do 15-year bonds because they can't put that kind of money into a sinking building kind of thing. It's not new. If it's a new building, they can go up to $30 million. I mean, they can go up to 30-year bonds. So we were kinda, at this point, when all this was realizing, we got accepted into the feasibility study a few years back. And that's where we, we went through the eligibility phase. We went through the feasibility stage. And now we just entered into the schematic design phase. That's an important part of this 'cause it will start to give us real identified cost. So that's just kinda, you know, here's what we're looking at. I'll just give a quick show. You would've saw it up there on the big screen, but I figured I'd give you this little slow, little tour of this, right? So that's kind of what we were talking about as the initial cost. So we were looking into all of that and we then got to feasibility. What would be feasible for Franklin County Tech? Is it feasible to have our existing building updated to existing codes? Let's take a look at that first 'cause we wanna be cautious of our taxpayers. That's the first thing we looked at was the updating the existing building to code. And the estimators selected that one. You can't really see it, but that one at $103 million. So that would be just to get it up to code. That doesn't address the assembly hall we had to get rid of and put four classrooms in. It doesn't address the various related rooms that we had to cut into shops to get and decrease our square footage to not be in compliance with the regulations per student square footage, but we're grandfathered into some of that as well. So it's $103 million with not one penny of that getting reimbursed by the MSBA. So that option wasn't feasible to us. It, AURAC, I, you know, we can't speak for the communities, but we were thinking, I don't think a community wants to spend $103 million or something. They don't get reimbursed or something that they're gonna have to keep pumping 15-year bonds in or pumping more money in for past a 30-year, probably for like ever, until you can't function in the building. So that didn't make any sense. Then we have other options we looked at, the existing building, and tried to get it up to educational code and structural code. Well, that was option two at $203 million. Option three was more the same and that was around $202 million. Option four was a unique, out-of-the-box type of thought, trying to locate our school with, you know, one academic area, two floors, and then have all our vocational clusters separate around the campus, kind of make it more like a campus model. That was an idea that they took a look at and the architects and the engineers put forth of the $201 million. And then we had two other, I'll just skip over to where we are at. We had the two major options we were seriously considering. One was an all boxed-in school to conserve space and try to limit square footage. And that was $196 million for a brand-new construction in which the MSBA would be reimbursed in around 50% of that. So you get reimbursed with the MSBA. You're still gonna pay about the same even if we update our existing facility, but then the bleeding stops. It doesn't continue past the 30-year mark. And the other one was a new construction building for like $197 million, which had a separate area isolated from the school where all the vocational shops would be. And it can't real, I'll, I'll show you. There's another picture down the road that I'll show you. And that's the one that we're targeting on because it makes sense because right now, if you walk down our hallways, you'll be in math class smelling the autotech fumes. You'll be in science class smelling the welding. We're right across the hall from each other. There's no getting around it. The other thing I didn't mention earlier that was, has, yeah, has been was the sewage and plumbing. We had to vacate whole wings of the school for periods of time as we try to find where this clog's happening. Fortunately, the two major times that happened, we found it. One was outside, like in the front of the building. We, potluck, they found that one.
That was problem-solving for your opponent department.
Yeah, yeah, I'll tell ya. We actually had contractors. We couldn't find it, so we had to hire people to come in. And to replace that whole thing was approximately, let me get that up, that's $10 million. So we looked at everything. The school would actually be located on our existing facility in that purple area that you would see there. That's where it most likely would be located. That's what they're targeting, so we already own that land and there wouldn't be a disruption to the educational process. We could still maintain our school building, be in there while that's being built, and then when it's finished, move the kids over. That would be the likely scenario. And the actual building itself would look something like this. Cartoon drawings for now, where it's in the early stages of the schematic design. So we're gonna have much, I think by budget season, we'll have some pretty good photos. Yeah, we'll have some good rendering photos. So that would be able to do what it would look like as far as what we need. And I should just show it from the current slide, it'll be easier. So that's just pretty much what the inside would look like.
The blue being the vocational.
Right. And they'll have visual and digital walkthroughs and all that stuff. Right now, we're not at that level. We just entered the schematic design, so they have to refine the cost and they have a mission to be able to do that. So the outside would kind of look similar to this. So that's what it would potentially look like. And where are we? How did we arrive at that? Well, we went through a long process over the last several years of a decision-making matrix and some of the things I just told you was a part of that. But we did it with the architects and the engineers and with our staff and with community members and we kind of went through a checklist that they designed for all new school buildings. And the far, the one on the far right is the one we chose 'cause it hit all the checkmarks and it was a satisfactory to what we were doing and it wasn't the highest cost. It was $500,000 bucks more than the lowest one, which didn't have the firewall proof, which was a safety issue, I think, for us and it gets us away from the fumes of the school. So that's what we were thinking as well as that. Now, what's happened to these school buildings over time? Everyone knows since COVID, they went way up. Back in, for an example, I got a chart in front of me and I'll swing it around in a minute. It shows back in 2013, the Greenfield School costs $66 million for 160,000 square feet of space. And it will show on this chart all the different dots. I'll just turn it around as I talk. I get this memorized anyways. On the bottom part of the screen, you'll see that little bullseye. And that's all of, that's where the Greenfield School District came in at a price point. All the other little squares that you see around there were all the same MSBA building projects across the entire state and where they fell in per square footage. So Greenfield came right around $330 per square foot. At that time, they were slightly above the average at that time, but not drastically when they came in. And did you see the price go all the way up? We're up at that other red dot. That's $893 per square foot and we're on slightly below that average right now. If you project out where Greenfield was, if they had the same average going up, they would actually be more expensive than us 'cause they're dealing 160,000 square feet. We're a VOTEC shop, I mean, a VOTEC school, so we'll have 220,000 square feet. So if you had that on Greenfield, it would actually be a little bit more than us. So that's where the prices have gone and that's the problem. I mean, they're real expensive. So these are the square footages from some of the local projects done in the last year or two. And every year that you wait, it goes up 4% in labor and cost, 4% materials and supplies. So some of these schools are higher than us even though they were projected on their price point done a couple of years before us. Even, you know, we have one at, you know, $892 that was done two years ago, which you add 4% to that on both labor and materials, would be significantly higher than us and they came in at $892 two years ago. They would be probably close to that 1,000 per square foot reg that you see being tossed around nowadays. Where we are with enrollment, like I said to you at the last budget meeting last year, I said, "I think this year here, I mean, coming up, the one that we were counting in last year would be our high year." And I still believe that to be true. As you can see, our in-district enrollment has now begun to drop back down, right? So we're $591 last year. We're $579 this year. So you can start to see the trend that we already predicted 'cause we were receiving the school attendance reporting. We identified everyone in every town from kindergarten, first grade, second. We project that all the way out so we can do a 10-year trend. And we come pretty close to that when we look at the percentages. Just in case you're wondering how we're doing compared to other VOTEC schools, you know, there's a lot of stuff with VOTEC schools that I feel are, have the wrong mission. They're going after the elite college kids. They're not directly correlating it into the workforce. There's just a lot of that. And frankly, they did an independent analysis of all the VOTEC schools. See, how are you doing with percentage of high school graduates, you know, declaring and go right into the workforce upon graduation? How's Franklin County Tech doing compared to all the other VOTEC schools? Here we are, number one in the state at putting our kids to work. And that's important because those are the kids that are doing your electrical, your plumbing. You know, they're, they're the ones who are doing the construction. They're the ones who are servicing and these kids don't leave the area. I mean, you can see a lot of the companies that you probably all know about have, have a foundation of coming from the tech school. So we don't wanna lose our mission. Our mission, we're not a Mohawk region who does an unbelievable job with AP courses and getting kids ready for college. That's not who we are, you know? We do touch upon a little bit of that as required by the trades. For example, Johnson &amp; Wales won't take one of our kids unless they have an AP English course. So we have to offer that to, in order to help kids get into the vocational trades in culinary arts. So, but we're proud of staying true to our mission here and I think that's real important 'cause we have great schools in the area and we encourage them to go there if, if they don't have a desire to work in the trades. Grants have been helpful to us. Outside of the entitlement grants, we have accumulated roughly to date since 2014, $11.5 million of grants that have not come from Franklin County. And that's important. That's enabled us to do things like create an animal science veterinary clinic in a brand-new facility, which what does that do? I think I came here 11, 12 years ago and we had two or three students going off to Smith-Vogue, which costs transportation plus tuition. Today, that money runs around $57,000 to $85,000 if one student goes.
We still have one going.
We just had a special town meeting to...
So it's, it is, we're gonna grow into, just so you see our vision, we're gonna grow into a full-fledged agricultural school, so those days will be gone, right? So we're moving in that direction. We just put forward another $2.5 million competitive grant to help. If we get that one, we'll be there, right? So that's gonna help our small towns to get budget busters for ridiculous amounts of money. And I would encourage every small town to do this 'cause we have had a couple have to come back to us because of this. The town has the right to request from Smith-Vogue what program they're in each year. 'Cause what happens sometimes is students will leave for Smith-Vogue, which has the same shops that we have. To get in there under the auspices of animal science or something that we don't have. We have animal science now, so that shouldn't be one. And then they'll change over to carpentry or machine tech and you guys are paying an $80,000 bill you shouldn't have to pay and you could pay what the per-people cost is here, which is, I don't know, what is it? $14,000 here? 15? But it's significantly, I mean, it's night and day, right? And so I think that's something that I encourage towns to do when you get stuck in that type of situation.
Is there privacy issues with that or how?
Well, you're footing the bill.
Tell us. I actually know what the students are this year and I'll check again next year.
Yep. Exploratory programs we offer it, so.
You can definitely, they should be coming to our exploratory program before there's a sign-off. So they get to see, 'cause sometimes when that happens and you're 13, 14 years old, all of a sudden, you're getting attached to, "Oh, I didn't know it was like this," and they stay, right? That's the way the regulations are written by the Department of Ed. Unfortunately, some school districts don't follow that, right?
So if the superintendent signs off on that Chapter 74 application to Smith-Vogue?
Yeah, I don't know if they still do it. When we lived in Worthington, our, one of our sons went to Smith vocational.
Yep.
And in the beginning, they go to different programs to see which one they like and then you don't necessarily go there for one particular program. Is that what they still do or?
Oh, yeah. We do an exploratory as all VOTEC schools are required under the regulations to do, where the students have a chance to explore all the shops. And very often, 50% of the time, you think you're gonna go there for autotech and you explore all the shops and all of a sudden, you're picking up a hammer and you're doing carpentry 'cause you like that better. You're 13 years old. You're 14 years old. So that's the importance of them coming to us for exploratory and that they feel they still want what Smith-Vogue offers, then they're allowed by regulation to go to Smith-Vogue.
That's fair.
But there's a process. And that process, if it's followed, I think helps all our, all our towns. And if, again, if we go to our goal of becoming a full-fledged agriculture, there's just a picture of our veterinary clinic, you know? I think that helps everybody plan for the future and plan for the budget. So we'll get there. That's been our mission all along. So we'll, it's just gonna take time, obviously, 'cause there's never been a VOTEC school in the state that was started as a VOTEC school and then turned into a vocational agricultural school. There have been agricultural schools that added on VOTEC shop programs, but it's never been the other way around. We want to be the first on that because look where we live. We're in Franklin County. This is an agricultural hub, so we need that type of training. And with that competitive grant money, we were able to build a 12,000-square-foot aviation maintenance program, which has a half a dozen aircraft, state-of-the-art equipment. Kids that get out of that program are gonna be able to have jobs everywhere in the country because of the shortage in aviation maintenance technology instruction. And we're located right next, we share the same property line at the airport. So it's a natural, it's just a natural way of going about that. So that program, I'm gonna say it, is beginning to take off. Sorry, I couldn't help it. Couldn't help it. Had to fit it in there. Where we are with the timeline with the new building is right here. We're, we're looking at, you'll see that red line is kind of the timeline, small little thing. That's where we are now, so we got a ways to go. The final completion is expected around 2031, right? And how that would go about it. As far as, let's talk projection of the town of Buckland, which is, I think, a major reason why I'm here, is to get some projections. We're not gonna have finalized projections until this, until around February-ish, when the schematic design is approved by the MSBA. Until then, we can only give ranges, right? So the range for Buckland would be 210,000 to 240,000 annually for 30 years on average. It would be 2.85% of the total project based on population in EQV. And basically, you probably heard this line before, but each town's annual capital cost share is based on the average of two factors. It's proportion of the district's total population from the most recent U.S. census and it's proportion of the district's total equalized property valuation as most recently reported by state tax commission. These two ratios are then calculated, added together, divided by two, and the final average is rounded to the nearest third decimal point. So when you hear the word EQV or equalized valuation, that's what they're referring to. Just wanted to put that out there.
Since you came here with the number of saying what it could cost us and up there, what do we pay, what's, what do we pay now in the town of Buckland? And maybe I should know that, but I don't, to you.
No, I don't have the exact...
And I wasn't in budget mode. I apologize.
No, I'm just kidding. You throw out those numbers there, two, 10 to two, 14.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, that was back 50 years ago where the towns established that regional agreement and bought into it at X amount of cost and I, I was pretty sure that's expired by now.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
We do have the windows and doors project still ongoing. So we're still, we'll have that, but that's small.
No, I was just trying to make a comparison.
So there will still be that assessment.
In my elementary school mind, you know?
Yeah. And then, yeah, so that's kind of where we're at right now with the, with the building project. There's just a couple of small slides I have for the lottery, but I can take any questions on the MSBA project right now before I switch over to admissions and lottery.
I have a question. So there's no, is there an approval process like?
Yes. Okay, so the approval process goes like this. For regional vocational school districts, we will need a majority of the vote from the 19-member towns and we have to have the vote on the same day, during the same hours and yada, yada, yada. So that's, that's likely to occur. They say late September in the graph, but it looks like we, it would be any of late September to mid-October in that range of next year.
Right in between your other voting.
Right, right. That looks like the timeframe and we'll see when the, when the OPM, the owner's project manager and the architects kind of are done with everything, but that looks like the timeframe that would occur would be next October-ish.
So how, is there a certain, is it just majority or is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Simple majority, yeah.
Yeah.
Simple majority, okay.
What happens if a town can't afford it?
Good question. I don't know how that works. Do you?
So I just was reaching out to legal and our project manager today about the two-thirds vote and simple majority. So I'm just waiting for a little more feedback from both of them because regional school, vocational districts are a little bit different than regional districts and there's Section 16N of Chapter 71 about the votes. And there's language, like when we did our windows and doors project, we needed the school committee to be the two-thirds vote and then we were able to do simple majority for the ballot question. So I'm just trying to confirm with them that all of the process will be the same.
And it looks like that process has to be identified in your regional agreement, which ours is. So most likely, it's gonna be the same process that we had previously in our MSBA, but the question is, what if a town can't afford it? I, I'm not sure how that would work. I know that if you get a majority, I think that's, I'm not sure how it would work if the town can't afford it.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, say, you know, for all intents and purposes, say Buckland votes against it because we can't afford it.
Right.
But yet it passes.
Yep.
What do we do? You know, I mean, if, if we can't afford it, you know, what, what would be expected of us?
That's a very valid type of question. So I'm not sure how that works with the MSBA.
There's some language in that law as well about if towns don't approve it, afford it, that they would not have additional seats within this district. So there's a lot of language about it that I'm just trying to get full clarity, so I don't speak out of turn.
Like for example, like I think a similar question came up in the town of, I think it was Heath. Example, like I think a similar question came up in the town of, uh, I think it was Heath, I have been at so many, it might have been lighting, I'm not sure. Um, and then we would look at, I don't know how to answer that particular question, but what I can tell you is that. All those students would be going to Smith. And they have a right under the law to pursue vocational technical education or agricultural education. So if we take the eleven current applicants, or the twenty two total kids are in Buckland. Average that by seventy five thousand, that's what you're paying anyway, which is gonna be more than your assessment by double or triple. In the town of Heath, they would have had to pay six hundred thousand for not as populated as the town of Buckland. Yet their assessment would have been like a hundred and ten thousand, so it just depends on what you're looking at. You know, I think it's um, I don't have the exact answer from a legality standpoint, but I would guess that kids. You know, maybe not all twenty two would go to Smith, I don't think that would happen, but you, you know, you're gonna lose at least half of those. If not eleven or twelve, at an outrageous amount of money.
So would we have to approve a debt exclusion if?
Two and a half override.
Yeah.
Or cut our own budget in other ways? That's where our finance committee.
It would be thirty years. And the reimbursement rate from the MSBA would be about a hundred and twenty five million. Somewhere that would not have to be paid back, but that would be the reimbursement, but you're still paying a ridiculous amount of money anyway, you shake it. Because that's a hundred plus million in a community like this. I mean, all nineteen member towns, that's, I can't believe how much the prices have shot up.
And we're in the process, as maybe you've heard already, we're.
Yeah.
Trying to do something with our school district itself.
Right, exactly.
You know, uh, minimal student, student population going out. I'm a big supporter of tech school, my dad was in Aspet and Marlboro and Blackstone. And so I'm very familiar, and I, I do respect that my son graduated from tech school oh five and uh. Said, uh, but I understand, but when it comes to finances, it's, you know.
No, I'm, I am empathetic of that, so that's not anything I'm, I would ever say, hey, you know, I can't believe you got, no, I understand it. I'm just trying to tell you where we're at.
Sure.
In our process and with the understanding of where town and, and I, there would be no ill will if a town votes it down. On our part, because it's like, we, we get it, you know, it's just. Um, I can't tell you to vote yes, I can't tell you to vote no, all my job is to provide you with the information. And so that's where I have to be um, pretty focused on.
I smile every time I hear of a new program over there, and I smile. Uh, good security college letting people go to become nurses for nothing, I mean, you know, I, I, I'm impressed with that, but uh, you know. I don't know where that money's coming from, I would tell you that's a state which surprises me, but uh, you know. We have to look and see if this.
Well, let's hope they fix a lot of things, you know, including this whole problem with um. Vocational schools and admissions and um, the money for these facilities. Across the entire state, it just. It's unbelievable how much they went up since COVID, and they maintain that, even though the supplies and materials have come back down. They've kept the prices the same. That's not fair to the towns.
And even like twenty two students from Buckland, that's a, that's a lot of kids for us to bits, even if they're going to this.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the number that we're looking at, where you got the two ten or to two forty a year? Are you looking at the inflated twenty thirty one final number, are you looking at the starting number of?
So, for the debt payment schedule, so it'll ramp up, I mean, it won't start at the two forty, but that two forty is the high.
How, based on what?
The twenty thirty one, is what I've written down there, twenty thirty one project. Thank you, that's, yeah.
So the total price would be two hundred and forty six million, reimbursed at a hundred and twenty million, right? And so that would leave about a hundred and twenty five, hundred and thirty million dollars spread out over nineteen mi- towns over thirty years, based on the EQV.
Buck, Buckland's share being about seven million at the two point eight five percent. It will ramp up over time with bonding, it won't be.
Yeah.
That, year one, that's not what you'll be paying, it'll, it'll ramp up over the years, as the construction goes on.
And the admissions is another big concern too, because we're now in the lottery for the first time. Um, there, the lottery came about as some of these larger vocational technical schools in the eastern part of the state. Had waiting lists of four or five hundred, with hundreds of those kids on the honor roll. They were taking the best of the best of these kids, um, rather than taking the kids who really need it. Um, so what happened is legislation got put forth to address the perceived lack of equity. Um, among the students who couldn't get in versus students who are in, and they went through all this regulation. Well, out here, it doesn't impact us as much, cause we're probably gonna have the same kind of kid, no matter what, but. It impacts a couple of areas, one is, it zaps motivation. So if you're an eighth grader and you and your family are just motivated for, you know, you're in the cars since you were two years old. You just, you know you wanna go into auto tech, no doubt about it, and you apply to the Volk school and don't get in, now what? You know, the problem with the lottery, it's not a fix for the towns, I'm gonna project it's gonna cost towns more, because where are they gonna go?
To Smith, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Right, so it's a problem, that the department.
Will Smith be on the same boat, though? They're still gonna fall under the same lottery system you guys would be.
The days, they would fall under the same lottery system, but depending on what, like what shops are available. Like someone could still apply, cause they have a, you know, a shop that's available, cause they don't have, remember, they don't have a regional agreement. They're a city school, their only agreement is with Northampton.
Right.
Right, so there's, lays the problem, where have member schools and nineteen member towns. Which they're kind of committed to us on that end of it, so their problem isn't as significant in a sense, because they're only married to Northampton. Yet they've served more towns than us, cause they have kids coming from all over the place, you know, so. They can't survive just on Northampton. So theirs is a whole different thing, they're not, they're, they're not held to that kind of a lottery that we would be. Cause of our member districts, they're held to Northampton's, but that's where it would stop, so it's, it's a little bit different all over the place.
How's, how many kids uh, come to the tech school uh, who are not in member towns?
Approximately, what do we got, twenty something last year, um, c- come in. I think we got a total of like forty, this, forty or so.
How many different towns?
Um, towns on the fringe that were originally, some are even mentioned in our regional agreement, like Crowe and Chalaman. Um, you know, they're not paying the member fee, they're paying double that. But um, those are some of the big hitters, huh?
Eight or nine?
Uh, no, it's about a half a dozen, you know, then you got, you got Chalaman, there, there, there's like a kid here, a kid there. But consistently, year in and year out, you're talking about a half a dozen towns or so. Um, and there's, you know, that, like this year, we got a kid from Amherst, well, that usually doesn't happen, those kids usually go to Smith Volk. So we got a couple of kids from Amherst, wow, we're surprised about that. Um, but that's where that falls in, in, in the whole admissions process, I think that's the motivation of the middle school student. Cause if that student's, I mean, what's to hanging on the head if they say, well, I wanna get into the Volk school so I can become a carpenter. Or an electrician, well, your grades aren't that good, you gotta, you gotta start behaving more. You know, you got some school discipline issues and, you know, you were out of school twenty five days, you gotta have your attendance be improved. Now, the motivation to get into the tech school is gone, you don't need that, just throw in your name and you're gonna be in the lottery. So it's, it's kind of um, we're sending the wrong message through the lottery. Um, the Department of Ed knows exactly how I feel about this, so I'm not saying anything they haven't heard. Right, the legacy students, the father went there, the mother went there, the, the brothers and sisters, and now that kid may or may not get in. So it does have an impact in our communities, um.
How's that gonna work with the, cause we have seventeen slots.
Yeah.
And we get the excess of some towns that aren't using their.
Right.
How's that gonna play out in the lottery?
Yeah, so how, how it works out is this. So basically, every applicant with a completed application and verbi- and verified address gets a random lottery number. Students are accepted into the lottery, um, as long as their own town still has it, the openings. Once a town's quarter is filled, any additional student from that town go on the holding list. Even if their lottery number is high, some towns do not fill their seats. And after all the towns have used up all their allotted seats, any leftover seats are given to the remaining students. With the best lottery numbers, regardless of what town they're from, so that's how it would backfill. So in this way, let me give an example, it is possible for more than the four buck, cause they even only got seventeen students. For any given year, you're allocated four per grade level, which gets you to that seventeen, you're actually like four point two five of students of some. I don't think we can divide someone's fingers off, but that's, um, so in this. Yeah, yeah, so in this way, it is possible for more than four Buckland students to be accepted. Depending on the number of open seats of the other towns, last year about thirteen percent of the applicants, or thirty seven students withdrew their application. And decided not to come to Franklin County Tech, so we anticipate that being even a higher percentage for this year, based on the lottery. So we expect that to be high, so there'll be a lot of movement after the lottery. Applications close January fifteenth, lottery is selected February sixth, one of the things we're gonna do in between January fifteenth and February sixth. Is go through um, the verification process, so here's what has to happen when the student applies. The student submits a full application and signs an attes- an attestation confirming that they live at the address that they provided. Guidance then checks whether the student has uploaded a proof of residency. And we are having a third party take these applications, cause they're gonna do the lottery, not us. They're going to, there's a company that was established as a result of this, where most of the Volk schools will, not most, half the Volk schools will use. I think it's more transparency if we're not the one doing the lottery, having an outside agency do it. And then, then the guidance confirms that address on the application matches the address on the uploaded documents. With the license, the rental agreement, the electrical bill, or any other acceptable mail. And if the addresses do not match, the guidance emails the family to request an appropriate document and shares the list. Um, of the acceptable proofs of residency, if the addresses do match, guidance selects the addresses being verified. And now they can verify in the third party company called GoToCTE. Guidance updates the student's GoToCTE status, and the residency is verified. So all that takes place just to get into a verified application. Now, we're gonna go one more layer, and it's important. And the one more layer is important, because what if we run into someone verifying it, and they do all the right stuff? And we've had a situation, as you're well aware of, in Buckland and Shelburne, where we had two children. We have two children from the same family. That one address that was verified was a P O box. One address was a house address in two different towns, one Shelburne, one Buckland. Make matters even a little more complicated, one had a different last name than the other. So you can't figure that out, so what we're gonna be doing, so that we can catch these ones earlier. Is after the deadline on January fifteenth, we'll be sending the list to the town of, the challenging towns. Corain, Heath, Buckland, Shelburne, you know, there's a few of them that are right on the fringe of these things happen. Because where streets are located and addresses are verified or not, so we'll send it to the town clerk. To verify the, the names on the address, this is indeed where they live, so we can avoid a kid. So it's, we, we generally have done that during budget season, which is how we were able to catch the last group. But now we gotta do it pri- prior to that for these ninth graders, so that we can not only catch them, but what if a kid could get in? And they don't get in because the slot's being taken by someone that really should have been a slot from another town, that kind of stuff.
But even that, it's just, even that is nasty, it, it's, you know, if you think about it, it's just nasty to do to. Kids and families and kids that really wanna go there, you know, once you come up and fill in the rest of our building in Mohawk and wood shop and a carpet. Carpentry shop, metal shop and stuff, and we can become Tech School, Mohawk, Mohawk Tech School West, and we can help you out.
Yeah.
How's that sound?
You know, whatever.
All for two million dollars, that's.
Whatever we've gotta do to work together.
I, I agree.
You know, because we have a lot of kids who, you know, we advise, you know, during that application, that meeting, probably inquiring about Franklin County Tech. And they were hearing about their ambitions, well, we didn't fit the bill. Their ambitions were more oriented to, you know, following mom and dad's footsteps, that four year college degree, going into a, a field that we're not gonna offer. You know, and I think we gotta stay true to that.
So, so, that, that lottery is how much again, for, for, for a year or for?
The lottery doesn't cost anything.
No, no, I mean, the amount of students that would, can go, what, what's our?
They have seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen.
Total?
Yeah.
Seventeen total grades, nine through twelve, you divide that up, your actual lottery for one year would be four students.
So how do we change that, that lottery system? How do we get rid of that?
It's gonna be a disaster across the state.
I think so.
And it's gonna be an uproar, unfortunately, um, there was a small group of three minorities that were unwilling to. A minority population that was unwilling to listen to the majority. And so they made this happen, and it's not gonna go well. It hits rural communities much differently than it does those who have populations. Though, they have their own set of concerns that are much different than us. Uh, odds is gonna hit us in a number of different ways, um. That all depends, now we have to reach, here's the magic bullet, we have to reach a hundred and sixty five confirmed. Applicants in order to implement, a hundred and sixty six, we have to be over the one sixty five, in order to implement the lottery. Right now, we have, let's see if I can dig it up. Right now, I don't have it on here, but we're in the vicinity of like a hundred confirmed applications. With another fifty being verified, and another seventy five that haven't come close to being verified, so.
That proof of residency is keeping things pending for some of these applications.
We don't know.
Our five zip codes, that's probably doing it.
Most likely.
Hundred and sixty four confirmed.
Then everyone gets in, everyone gets in, everyone gets in, regardless, right? So, again, it's, we don't know, I, I don't anticipate. I, you know, usually in these things, I don't know how it works with the lottery, no one knows how it works with the lottery, we've never experienced it before. But with admissions in general, we have eighteen, well, I have eighteen years' experience with this here, and. There's a lot of, um, in the last, you know, one week or so, there's a lot of people come to the table, so I don't know what will end up happening. I'm sure that number of one hundred verified is gonna go up, but if it doesn't go up high enough, then everyone who applied gets in. So I don't know where that's gonna fall. Good question, I'm glad I could anticipate it.
So if you hit that one sixty six number.
Yeah.
Then every kid goes into the lottery at that point?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is it, is it fair to say, Rich, that just about every vocational program across the state, the superintendents were all on the same page as opposing the lottery?
Yeah, that's very safe to say, because they know the schools, they know, they're not doing it to gain more kids. They're doing it for the same issue that we just talked about. If, i- i- it, it doesn't help families, it doesn't help kids, it doesn't help towns. Um, it just isn't a, there's a process that was in place that had worked greatly, that made Massachusetts. Ranked independently as the number one state in the country for vocational technical ed- education. There are entities doing everything they can to take that away, and this is one of the processes. Because they're trying to resemble a New York type of school system. Which has Volk Tech School for only your junior, senior year, called the Boji model. And um, they go on a lottery, they do this, and no one's, their work rate coming out of those schools are less than thirty percent.
I can see that, yeah.
So it doesn't work, um, so I don't know where it's gonna go, if this is a new way of doing things, we're gonna, we're gonna follow it. We're gonna follow what we need to do.
What's the plan for the disposition of the existing building when the new one gets built?
Great question. It is located, um so the new one's gonna get built independently. So when the kids move over, if we've received approval, always gonna put that as a caveat. If we've received approval and the new kids move over, then with being built kinda on a. A baseball field occupies some of the soccer field. We also own ten acres behind it. So it'll be pushed back a little bit, but it's still gonna interfere with that baseball field. And that soccer field, so that becomes a new baseball field and new soccer field. All that's included in the price.
They'll decommission it.
They'll have to decommission it um. And a- and then repurpose the space for a baseball and soccer field, which is included in the price. Well, that's why it's important to get out to the town and just have these kinda, you know, town hall kinda conversations because there's so much to this, there's so many layers. To everything from admissions to the lottery to the building itself. And that when you're going through these layers of progress and the eligibility to the feasibility, to the schematic design, to the district-wide vote. And to to the final production. I mean, this, there's a lot to talk about.
We know we're going through it with Mohawk as well.
I get more clarification on the vote language and two-thirds and majority and whether or not a town can or cannot afford it or support it. I'll share that with the board as well. So.
You know, getting back to those forty kids, I'm thinking about their tuition, they they pay double, right?
Some more, some triple. So so say for instance, or quadruple. You 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 take someone from Orange. That pays six thousand six hundred dollars per student. And then you get a kid from Levitt that's paying twenty-seven thousand dollars per student. So it's significantly different.
What what would it take to get a a capital assessment on top of those forty kids?
Far as what?
Having them participate as members in terms of funding the new school.
Well, we can't do anything right now. Um we had, did have an invitation. Um couple of years ago for any other towns that were outside of our member town to have an evening. To see if they were interested in joining the district. And we had some interest. We had probably four or five towns that were there. We had a second meeting. Four or five towns, right? And they kinda wanna wait to see how everything goes.
Could change the mindset.
Yeah, there's just, there was a lot of information that is not unlike o- other Volk Tech schools that have done the same thing. I guess it's it's very tougher uh on a non-member town to pull the plug right there. Cause it's like there's an initial jump start to that cost when you join a regional agreement. And there's a upfront money, which you really don't recoup. Until about ten years down the road when your students come in and they're and they're paying the lower rates. So now you break even. About eight or ten years down the road before you start benefiting from it. So it's playing the long game and that's. You know, these small communities, that's a tough game to play. So. Good question.
You know, it's funny, I heard a lot about the techier shops and things, but uh. I tell you, my son graduated from two oh, in oh-five um in carpentry. Of course, it wasn't a big time to try to set a business, oh-five, graduated every year there. Uh he's a major Abishans, but the point is. Just learning the skills they were taught for tools and the use of them, correct tools, all this. Uh there wasn't anything you can't do. My electricity's wrong in house, he comes and takes care of it. The plumbing, which, don't tell anybody, he don't, but but it's just amazing. So I do appreciate that very much. Plus, he was told in the third grade that he was not gonna pass the M-CAS because he was, we had a lengthy, lengthy thing. He passed the first year of a tech school with it, so uh yeah, I mean, I'm just saying it's, you know, I have a lot of favorite tests. Plus my dad, having done that for many years, put me through college, so.
Well, I mean, we offer the right kind of student.
Yeah, it for not, it's not for every student. It's not. It's right. And that's what the lottery may do is. Keep those, the students that belong there out and some others that don't really need.
There's gonna be definitely kids who have, who who.
I know.
Been motivated to go there for years.
That's what I'm saying.
That's definitely gonna happen. That's, you know, so.
Is it possible for you to send those slides to me so I can share them to the finance committee and so forth?
I'm hoping we can help you and help ourselves.
Send it to you tomorrow. Do you have the email?
She should have the email, so it's uh T W N admin. We can't afford the O in town, sorry. At town dot Buckland, dot M A, dot U S. And I know Janice does, I, she should have it.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
But thank you.
Well, we'll be back in the budget season to kinda present where we are with the upcoming assessment, the normal routine that we do. Um if we have any additional update information at that time, we'll share it with you, but it won't be as long as tonight, obviously. Um tonight's kinda the in the informational session. And then we'll just provide any other updates and I don't know when that would be. I mean, I I start the process as early as late December with some of the towns. Um and it goes to like March and soon as I'm done in March, I go away to town meeting, so it doesn't end. And uh I do try to enjoy my summer vacation.
Alright, well, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Moving to our first agenda item, uh we've got the transfer station decals for twenty twenty-six.
Yes. So um we're wrapping up the year. We've, we have ordered next year's shipment. I just wanted to sort of give you a a recap on what we um. Basically earned back this year for the decals. We collected seven thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars in additional revenue by selling the decals. It doesn't still off, it just offsets things, but our our um. Co- operating costs are still a hundred and twelve thousand two twenty-one fifty for the transfer station each year. Um but we, our bags and stickers, between the bags and stickers, the decals, what we're collecting in scrap metal and white goods. That's about forty-five thousand dollars a year. So it's something. I more just wanted to let you all know that it's time to roll out the decals again and see if you're still on board with. But the pricing that we had established for this past year, which was twenty dollars per sticker. Five dollars if anyone needs an additional sticker for an extra car in their household. Um and basically, if you're on board with that, just sort of, we're gonna roll it out. We have the forms to hand out at the transfer station. So people can start coming, either they can come in person, they can pay online, they can mail their application in with a check, whatever. You know, we sort of had a good system going by the time we got through year one. By the time we figured it all out. And they will be a different color this year, of course. So you will need to, you know, residents will need to replace their sticker. Or or deal with Medi, who's gonna point it out to you. So.
Any thoughts?
Nope, I'm all set.
Yeah, I mean, I think uh we can get cracking on those again. Do you need a vote from us for that?
Only I think if you were gonna change anything.
No, I think, you know, this is year two, so. You know, we'll give you a year hiatus.
Rethink next year as as um, I mean, solid waste pricing is certainly not going down. This year, we've actually seen a large increase in in the fact that recycling is not being offset like it used to be. The market for recycled goods just isn't there. So it'll be interesting to see where we end up at the end of this fiscal year and next year. Maybe we'll have to have a different conversation, but um.
Yeah, I mean, if there's definitely that much of a gap, you know, we've we've gotta try to kinda close that gap.
Like it, like everything else. Nothing is getting less expensive these days.
Going up, so you know, if we can try to hold off one more year on it, then. We'll do that.
So we will get those flyers out to folks starting uh hopefully this Sat- this Saturday.
Next item, we've got the safety committee recommendations for speed radar signs, speed limits, and North Street parking constraints.
That was interesting. And thanks for highlighting.
Yes, so.
Really made it easier to follow all this.
Well, and of course, I didn't keep a copy for myself, so I'm glad I gave all of you the copies. You don't wanna follow along, Clint? Um so the safety committee did meet um back at the end of October. To discuss some some concerns that have come forward. Um mainly, as it usually is at the safety committee, a lot of it is about speeding vehicles. Um we did have Chief Bardwell there and Sergeant Bedrevich, um along with our fire chief. And our highway personnel and our facilities person and our regular committee. So we had a good group of people to sort of do some brainstorming and hear the concerns. Um they did come up with a few recommendations that, again, the the safety committee is just an advisory committee. They can't enact any of these recommendations. So tonight, I'm bringing them to all of you um to see if this is something that you are willing to. You know, approve. Um the first issue was on North Street. Um speeding definitely has been a concern, especially since the new sidewalks have been put in place. We have um residents that were along the odd side of the road, had to move their mailboxes over to the other side. And I can say firsthand, it's treacherous to cross the street because at that crest of the hill coming down north. If it's an electric vehicle or even just a regular vehicle, you're not hearing it and seeing it. Because that hill, I mean, people come over that hill very quickly. Um so the suggestion from Chief Bardwell is to place um the. We're gonna be getting some speed radar signs um and to place that there periodically to collect data on, you know. If there's a specific time of day that's more heavily traveled, what the speed is of the vehicles. Going down North Street, they have been trying to put, you know, it's a, it's a tricky spot to really set up radar. Um and again, he also pointed out, sometimes it seems a lot faster than it actually is. And having that sign in place will let people. Better understand how fast the cars are moving along. Um that was. You know, obviously, he also pointed out that anyone can call him if they have concerns or if they're notice- noticing a specific vehicle. That seems to be traveling through at higher rates of speed and they have a description of the vehicle. They're happy to kinda be on the lookout and have a conversation with that person.
How come she keeps looking over at you, Mary?
I'm not, Mary. No worries. Yes, that little, you know, rav that's driving. So that was the first concern. So there's really nothing that you all have to necessarily, unless you have something you wanna add to that conversation. But they are gonna try to be a little more, um do some more saturation. And again, I'm not police officer, but.
They have to be more diligent. I mean, they, I very seldom. If all, and I'm retired, so I get around, whoopie doo when my mother lets me out. I I very seldom see a policeman, very seldom. You you try to go to M and T bank and cross the street there and you're taking life in your own hands. And in, that's Shelby, I realize that. But now we've got a group of motorcyclists that are coming up, dirt bikes coming up Elm Street. Uh one, one in a green bike, an old green uniform, one in blue, blue bike, a blue uniform, these must kid, and they're flying by fifty miles an hour past the house. Now taking the trail that we have up there, the the trail to walk, and they're tearing it up. So. I don't know how I'm gonna catch them other than go with a baseball bat and knock one on the bike, but uh.
You know you're being recruited.
Greg was very clear that, you know, he, the phone number is available, um six two five zero three zero four, extension five. Um they do have a new um administrative assistant at the police station who is able to field a lot of the calls. And if you're feeling that you're seeing a lot of people or or concerns, please, you know, reach out to them and let them know. Um I have seen them actually doing patrols on North Street. Um they're quite often up in the rest area or pulled in down below. Um you know, I I know that it's it's hard to be everywhere, but that's where I think these speed radar signs will give them some good data as to. You know, I think when school gets out, there tends to be a lot of traffic that goes flying down the hill. Um and you know, it's 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 a lot about education and people understanding that, you know. There are people crossing the street to get their mail or people are using the sidewalks a lot more on North Street and walking up to school. Or up to the Buckland wreck in the summer. Um so again, that's that's the first concern on North. There was also a second concern on North with parking on the lower section of North. Um it's a tight spot through there. And if you get cars parked along the side. You're coming up a hill, you're not able, you're pushing over into the oncoming traffic to get around those cars that are parked there. Potentially a head-on collision could happen. Um it's also really tight. Her um Herb Gaiet, the chief, fire chief, had mentioned that if there's cars parked there, they couldn't get the ambulance to get through. They're then blocking the whole road. Um so the idea was to extend the no parking zone. Up past that crest in the hill on North and um make the the signage basically will say no parking tow zone. Um and enforcement is important. I mean, they have been doing some enforcement. We've had people coming in. There was a tractor trailer truck parked there for several days. He was ticketed. He did come in and pay. Um you know, the idea from the committee was that, you know, it's it's hard because there's a couple apartments at the end. And if you're trying to, you know, bring in your groceries or get your kids in the house, you know, to not have a place to park is challenging. But the idea was, you know, you park there temporarily, you bring in your groceries, you get your, get get it settled and then go move your car. Down to the lot by the Eagles um along State Street.
It's unfortunate that these, that these rental houses don't provide parking or driveway.
They can't because they don't have any place for it.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying.
When they rent it, they tell them there's a parking lot down below, but you're right, it's kinda hard to get get the kids to walk all up there. But it is dangerous. Just going, just go to the transfer station this morning with four vehicles there.
And that's the thing, and there's, you know, there's always kinda been enough space for two vehicles to put there, get off of the road. Um that, you know, which I would be. More inclined to leave like two open spots there for people to be able to park. Um you know, but if they're taking advantage of it and stacking cars up there, then you know, it's. You know, kind of tying our hands at that point because it's now, I mean, people have parked there for. You know, my grandparents live right next door, so I used to, you know, I I was there all the time growing up and.
But there's never more than a couple vehicles, one or two. Just spending the last six months to a year that it's just, there was four of them this morning when I was going up.
You know, when you get that many in there, that's.
And they're bigger vehicles, they're not just small cars.
The first part, it was a truck, but the hardest part was as I was waiting to see, because I'm supposed to wait for come, nobody's coming down. We weren't close at all, but you know, it's, it's kinda scary if someone's accidentally flying up over the hill.
Um so. What your thoughts are on that recommendation?
I like that recommendation.
Yeah, I I would be inclined to go with whatever recommendation the chief of police has because that's. They're the ones that would be the enforcement on it. And he's, they're the ones seeing the safety concerns every day. So. Um I know he was at that meeting.
He was. And they actually were who asked that 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 be put on the agenda. Sergeant Bedrevich actually had asked.
So they're looking for the no posted signs with.
Parking for that.
No parking, yep.
And then, you know, the committee felt that, you know, we really need to give the residents some time to be made aware of these changes. And, you know, give them a little flexibility if they need to temporarily park there. To unload their vehicles, but that it really, their cars cannot stay there overnight. They cannot stay there for any length of time.
What's the length of time?
I think beyond unloading your car. I think beyond unloading your car, so fifteen minute parking, I don't know.
Yeah, but I wouldn't put that there because then you're talking.
You'd have to chalk tires and figure all that out, and so. I think if the person is with the vehicle and it's very obvious that as they're out controlling.
Loading and unloading, I think, seems to work, you know, just parking only for loading and unloading.
Yeah, it'd be a long ways, it could bring groceries from the State Street parking lot, so, you know.
Right, even getting out, yeah.
Right.
Dad or mom's going to walk down and get the car, pull up, and then so we can bring the kids across, so it's, it's a scary spot.
Right, yeah, I would make a motion to allow the signage for no parking on the lower end of North Street to be updated.
I'll, I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, the, the rec area also, there were some issues with speed. We did have more signage put up. We're going to kind of wait, they had mentioned speed bumps as an option, I guess they do have like port, like a portable speed bump type of a situation because it's not paved up there, so it's not like we could install a paved speed bump, but we're going to see how this summer goes now that we've added some more signage, and, and it was new for a while, I think people, Cindy was giving verbal reminders to people to slow down.
A little dirt's pretty cheap. Build some dirt speed bumps.
There you go. So, we're going to see, we won't necessarily, but more just to make you aware that, that this is something that may come back up. The other thing that may come back up is the, and we talked about this a little bit, and I think we'll move this for, in the December meeting, to have some sort of a hearing about dogs being at the rec area, because that has been an ongoing issue.
Probably a good January meeting.
A January meeting, okay, sure. Sounds good. But another, another item as far as parking goes is on Green Street. I guess more people have started parking on both sides.
Yes, yes.
Of Green, and it's made it very difficult for the highway crew to even get through. So, Anthony had actually made a recommendation to ask if parking could be limited to just the even side of the street, and signs put up designating the odd side as no parking.
Yeah, I would be okay with that, I think I don't. Was there ever no parking there?
I don't know.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of it now, especially with the train, so many people go around, there's a train there, and I tell you, even a little car ride, try, trouble getting by there, so your truck wouldn't make it.
Just tell them all winter's coming.
Yeah.
Don't be anybody on the street.
Yeah. So, if you want to officially make that motion.
Make a motion to put up no parking signs on the odd side of Green Street.
Can you second that?
We're there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last thing, and I just got a price for this, I had no idea how expensive it is, but we're having an issue where many people are, and I think Clint even mentioned that he almost got hit coming off of William, people are just not stopping at that stop sign on State, they're flying right through, you've got kids coming out of BSE on that crosswalk, I've seen far too many cases of kids just running across and people just not even slowing down. The idea would be to maybe change that to a, one of the light, lighted stop signs.
I've seen so many people go through it.
It's the only chance to get off the bridge, one of the reasons the state put it there because we're complaining about you can't get off the bridge, and so they put the stop signs, but they're piggybacking now. One car wakes, you know.
I mean, I've seen them just full on blow through. They're not even slowing down.
It's frustrating when you're trying to get off the bridge now, and it wasn't.
Or pulling out of William or crossing there.
Yeah, yes.
And the other area is by McCusker's, that crosswalk, there was a lot of concern that people are, it's just not visible enough. So, I'm in the process of getting pricing.
Yeah.
To the stop signs, I just got one quote, it's twelve hundred dollars for one stop sign. It's rather, rather pricey.
Well, electronics?
Just, it's solar powered, but it has like the red flashing.
Right.
Like kind of around it to alert you.
I think that's needed, especially coming out of State Street right here, definitely.
So, that's one item, and then there was discussion Greg had mentioned, I guess Shelburne may have somewhere in town as a lit, like a crosswalk, a motion sensor that blinks to stop, has anyone seen that? Or maybe they're talking about getting it.
There's push button on Shelburne, I don't think Shelburne has one.
Hmm, okay.
At this point, but they do have, because I know we have them in Hatfield, there's a couple where you push the crosswalk button like you would in the Center of Greenfield, but it's just crosswalk signs and they, they'll signal while people are crossing the street.
So, I'm, I'm, no, I've, I've just started the process of looking into that.
That would be something we'd certainly have to look at a grant for.
Right, which that Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, perhaps that's something we could apply for, for next year for crosswalks.
It'd be nice if they were repainted.
They do repaint them quite regularly, they just don't keep, they just don't hold up.
No, especially when you have plowing and, and you have all the chemicals put down.
Anthony does paint them quite regularly.
I think he does them twice a year.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
So, about midway, I think they do them right in the spring, once plowing's over.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And then they do it again about halfway through the summer.
I'm sure those chemicals they put down really, and just hold.
It's just a lot of traffic, you'd be surprised how much traffic goes through town.
Lots.
So, so as far as the stop sign is concerned, is that something you would like me to pursue now? Because it, it really has been kind of an issue.
Where would we be looking at for funding for it?
Well, we can see, I know there's probably some funding in Anthony's line item, potentially. Herb has money in his EMD line item that potentially could be used.
This is, this is all a tough spot here, coming, coming up, you know, the river, South Street right there, I mean, a lot of times they don't stop there either.
Right.
And they don't, you know, they do a rolling stop at the end of Asheville Street.
If we could get people to stop consistently there, though, it's going to help that crosswalk as well.
This would help a lot, and it would help getting on the bridge.
Give a little pause, and I don't know how many people just don't see it, it is kind of situated a little farther over on the sidewalk.
No, it's not.
No.
No?
No.
You don't think so? Because I was brought up at the meeting by a couple of them.
That thing can just about slap you in the face when you're going up to it.
Right, well, they don't, they don't expect.
People don't pay attention is what the issue is.
They don't expect to stop there and then to stop for the crosswalk, you know, they're just not, you know.
Yeah. Well, I can do some investigating to see if I can allocate a source of funding, and I'm just now getting estimates, so that, that's just one estimate, I may hear from others that.
What'd you say, one sign is?
Twelve hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
That's just one estimate that I've received.
Yeah, so if you want to work on that and just bring it back to us in December.
I can do that.
Sounds good.
Yep.
December.
It'll be here before we know it.
Our next agenda, we have our, that was all for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have the new supplier for Buckland's Community Choice Power Supply Program. So, we are under a thirty-four month contract with our new, new supplier, which is First Point Power, and it's going to be beginning on January of twenty twenty-six.
And postcards will be going out to everyone who's currently in the program. No one has to do anything unless you want to opt out, it's the same process as last time. The new rates are lower than they were, not by a lot, but about seven dollars per month on the supply side. So, you know, every little bit helps, I suppose, but they will be getting a postcard. I'll be uploading all of this information to the website tomorrow, really letting the recorder, I'll send a press release to the recorder, so we'll get the word out.
Sounds good. All right, no more agenda items?
Except your municipal, your intermunicipal agreement, which may be more of an agenda item than a document.
Well, I mean, I think we can run it under documents and then sign it at our next meeting, we can, if we approve it, we can just bring it in. We have the intermunicipal agreement for police services between Buckland and Shelburne. I am part of that committee. We, at our last meeting, we went through our agreement because every three years, believe it or not, it's been, coming up on our three years with it, the document needs to be re-upped, I guess. So, the committee actually went through, there was, I don't know if you guys got this prior to the meeting, but with the changes and stuff.
Did send it out.
So, some of it, some of the things that we looked at striking out were things that were just getting the agreement off the ground, which are no longer needed for that agreement. And we just kind of went through it piece by piece, and the other big thing that was in there was just all of the things that the chief would be supplying, or that was in there to be supplying on a monthly basis. Obviously, a lot of it he can supply really at any time, but for this committee, we didn't really feel as though all of those things were really necessary. You know, and, and he was able to, if there was something specific, he was, he would bring it to the table anyways for the committee.
Did we get like a report from them, how many calls they've received over, you know, during the year, or, you know?
So, that is something that, you know, we could get from him for, from, he would supply that to the committee upon request.
It'd be nice to have an annual report, how many, you know, the activity that they, not, not, you know, specifically what they did, but, you know, we had this many calls, this many assistance.
That were just for Buckland.
Just for Buckland, what they did for Buckland, so, you know, this is not cheap.
Right. Yeah, I mean, and I think with his new admin assistant, he'll be able to kind of break that down a little bit better. The problem with a lot of this stuff is, and I understand it because we're in the same boat, but when they do things, they, he can't actually access the system to print up those numbers, they're about two months behind because the dispatch center, which is the State Police Dispatch Center, they're the ones that go through and finalize everything, and they keep everything about, they're doing everything from two months ago right now. And the reason they do that is to, you know, if an officer has to go back and put something else into a report or add something to that, once it's finalized, they can't actually access that to, to change any of it. So, they, they keep that stuff back for their logs.
So, if they're two months behind, say that, when, when do reports come for the annual report, would you get them?
We start asking for the information probably in February.
So, they could do a calendar.
So, he usually does, he usually does some sort of annual report anyways.
Yeah, I'm not sure what was in the last year's.
But they could do a calendar, you know, like do the year instead of having to do the fiscal year, you know, of this is how many calls, this, you know.
I know, it used to be that, set up that way when we were, you know, just Buckland PD would do like this many nine-one-one calls, this many speeding tickets, this many, you know, domestic calls, you know, those kinds of things.
Which was much easier to access before, but now because they're on, this whole thing is actually a countywide system now, it's, it's not, it, it's still is, it's still that simple to actually access that information, but being able to, being able to get that breakdown to, like, you know, Buckland before we were on this system, could actually, he could go in and give you everything for the last four months, right up until that very minute. Now, you're two months behind, so a lot of the, the things that he would have been bringing to the table at that point were already two months old.
So, I can see why.
We weren't, yeah, we weren't meeting, you know, we weren't meeting every single month.
Right.
So, if we're, if we're only meeting quarterly, we're looking at stuff that's six, seven months old already anyways.
But to Joan's point, we could probably ask for all of twenty twenty fours.
And he would have that all by time February came, you know?
Or even now, like you could ask.
Right.
In January of twenty-five for the prior years, if you're just curious about the call volume.
Well, I think people would like to know because it's, it's, it's not cheap to be doing this, I understand why it happens and why we're doing it, but people should have a know, how, how active is this Shelburne Police in our town? And this would be a way to show.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure on, I think he's still working on like kind of the breakup between the two towns and actually being able to separate them because it, again, comes back to zip codes and streets and, and everything else. So, it is a little bit more to try to break, break up the two towns.
Yeah, I understand.
So, and I think that's where, like that couple of months back, but, you know, he's also said too, if people have questions, they can certainly call and ask and, you know, and, and they can certainly provide the data because it's, you know, it's public record, so anybody can put in a public records request for it as well. This is just more of what he needed to, what we're looking to have him supply to the committee, which normally, you know, he just gives us the update on, on what they have, so he doesn't necessarily give it to us in hand, he has it all up on his computer and he just provides it to the committee because he's at all of our meetings.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
So, there was that, like I said, most of this stuff was the things to get it all up and running. Then there was a couple of word changes, you know, because we don't meet monthly, so there's, there's some spots where it did say monthly, you know, so now it's just, you know, because down the road it could turn into monthly, so, you know, it's just now just to submit reports as described. You know, so just small words there. The Exhibit A would have been the chief's contract, which obviously changes each time he does a contract, so we didn't feel as though having the contract in the municipal agreement was very feasible.
That's a lot of work going through that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, I, I know Rick Lopp here really kind of took this project on, and I, I think he did a really good job at going through it, but all of us, I think, at our last couple of meetings, we sat and we went every single section and went through it all, and, you know, this was everything that we'd, we'd all agreed upon, so. But now, obviously, we need to approve these changes, obviously, if we approve these changes, and then we also have to vote to continue on with another, with extending the contract for another three years.
What's it cost annually for us to?
To what?
To be part of the Shelburne Police Department, what does it cost?
What did we vote at that time meeting?
I don't remember.
It's over four hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was, it was three hundred and thirty for the first year, and I don't know what it was.
It's not cheap and it's, you know, we'd be, we'd be paying probably much more than that to have our own. You know, because, I mean, ultimately, the only, the only thing that is really being shared at this point, that, you know, we're sharing a cost ultimately with the town of Shelburne is the facility.
Yeah.
You know, we'd, we would have to have our own facility, we'd have to have, you know, two or three full-time police officers, we'd have, you know, which are already there.
Right.
So, you know, so the, the cost, that's really where our benefit tends to lie, is, is, you know, the facilities and the upkeep and maintenance.
It would, it would cost us more to be on our own, it.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I think it was right around three eighty, something like that, I think is what we, what we pay them.
But with the training requirements, you know. But with the training requirements, you know.
Well, that's it, I mean, you know, the, 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 the hits are gonna, he's not, at this point right now, they're not looking at any capital requests this year. Um, that was one that he did make clear and he verified it at our last meeting, that he's not looking for any capital. Um, you know, in, in no increases. So, um, because they did that study from last year. So, um, you know, so other than whatever their coal is set at. Um, is, is what we'd be looking at.
Health insurance.
Yeah, well, and the health insurance, that's, that's gonna be another, you know, that's a, that's gonna be another thing that we're gonna end up taking. Um, because obviously, we're, we're on the hook for half of it, so. But, you know, that just, we're getting hit with that all over the place, so.
Yes, indeed.
So. But yeah, I mean, I, you know, I know um, Bob has been keeping a really close eye on all of this as well. Um, I know he went through it with a fine tooth comb. Um, and, you know, I, I think both of us were in agreement.
You're talking about Bob Dean?
Yes, Bob Dean, sorry.
Case Mary didn't catch that. He was talking about Bob also has gone through it, and I said, made sure that we knew it was Bob Dean he was talking about.
Oh, I figured that out, yeah.
So, um, and then we also have our new member. I've only met him the once, so his name is fleeting me.
Oh, um, Jeff Gang.
Yep, Jeff Gang, um, he was at our last meeting as well, so he had an opportunity to, to go through it with us. Um, you know, he's still obviously working on getting his feet wet, but he, um, you know, he still was able to spit out some questions with it all.
Okay.
So, I think now all of our thoughts are filled, I think, for that committee, so. And I, it's a good working group, so. So, I guess with that, um, I would make a motion to accept the new agreement as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
No.
Bring none, all in favor?
Aye. That looked like a lot of work. But it's important to do.
It was and it wasn't, I mean, it's, you know, it was already all there. Um, I think the, the most work was Rick actually tracking down a PDF file of it. Which he ended up having to get from, um, I think the ones that actually wrote it.
The Collins.
Yeah. So, because everything was basically just sent over as a, um, it was sent as a PDF, but it was a scanned PDF. So, we couldn't actually go on and, and change anything. Um, so that took him a little bit of time. So, I guess maybe we just leave it at that and then we can.
I'm assuming he could clean up, take out the.
If, if we voted on the changes, um, which we just did, um, I will bring this back. I think we are meeting, I, um, or no, we're not, we're not meeting until January, so we do have to vote on it tonight. And then he can, um, we can let him know that the changes were approved.
Yeah.
And then we can sign them when he gets, gets them done. Um, I'll have him send those over. So, I would make a motion that we sign on to a, um, another agreement. With the town of Shelburne for three year for the municipal agreement for police services.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, I will reach out to Rick and have him send that over.
It's gonna be two-page less with all, with all the uh.
It, it will be, it will be much shorter, like I said, a lot of, most of the verbiage that was in here was just for the.
First year.
For the first year, um, getting it up and going. Now, just because we're signing this agreement for another three years, we can, we still have the opportunity to um, to back out, I guess. Um, or, or go our separate ways. Um, but I believe there was a six-month, um, is it six months or a year? I'm gonna have to look back.
Um, you know this agreement better than I do.
But there was. You know, so we, we can still separate from that agreement. This is just until, this would have to be voted on again, um, at that point in time. Alright, uh, permits and licenses, I don't, we didn't have any. We have our November uh, minutes from the tenth. And I was hoping for the twenty-fifth, but it's okay. I digress. I'll make a motion that uh, to approve the November tenth minutes as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, we have our vendor and payroll warrants, which I believe I saw came through a little while before our meeting.
That's, that's the next one.
That's the next ones.
No, well, no, those are, that was Mike working on the last fiscal years, are you talking about email from the accountant?
Yeah.
That's actually updates on the closeout of the last fiscal year.
That's what it was.
So, we haven't seen the warrants.
They're here, they're.
Oh, okay.
That's from the last warrant, which was last week.
That was mistaken, he sent those out yes, yesterday.
No, it was last, I think it was the end of last week that he sent those out. Cause he wasn't here yesterday.
Well, there's lots of emails here from Mike.
Like from today? He's been downstairs, he's been working all day today, so.
He's four from here.
No, I've only, I probably missed a couple then, when he was still down there when I came upstairs. Twenty-six eleven was last warrant, which was last Tuesday.
That's what we have right here.
Yep. Next week's another warrant week.
I'm not, I didn't see it.
Pretty sure he sent them, because Kara had asked him to attach. Oh, I'm, I thought I had them in my email. I don't see it.
Those are the ones today, and the last one I got from him was on the fourth.
So, the ones that you have there in the documents to sign, you're saying you never received the electronic version of those?
No.
Any surprises on them?
No, it's the usual vendor and payroll.
It's starting normal. Yeah, I just, I, I didn't see them pop up.
Swear.
I usually try to take a quick glance at them.
Yeah, no, it's always a good idea. I can run down and grab the hard copies for you to look at if you press.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, it's, and it's still on, on par with the same, right around the same numbers, so.
Oh, yeah, we didn't slip any million-dollar bills in there.
We're in the same, uh.
The next one, though, the uh, wastewater's truck came in, so you will see on that next warrant, there will be a fairly hefty expenditure.
Did they get the, the lettering on the app?
Not yet, not yet, we're still waiting to get it registered.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the both vendor and payroll warrant, uh, it's gonna be twenty-six dash eleven for both.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, item's not reasonably anticipated by chair, I don't have anything, right? Okay, I, I don't have any.
Not that I'm aware of.
Select board member concerns? Did your light get fixed?
My light, I said, have a picture.
Okay.
Have the light, so like, thank you.
His concern is over. Until another one starts.
No more concerns.
You should drive around and find some, Larry.
Uh, no, I, I.
You're good.
I'm good, listen, just to get here is quite a project for me, I've gotta make sure mom's got this and got that.
Gotta make sure I text you.
I was actually out going up the door, and then she called me back, you know, I don't have any water.
I had, I had faith that you, you remembered.
Oh, I remembered. Yeah, I have to start her a little bit earlier, I think.
Uh, town administrator's report.
Okay, I have a couple, just a couple of things. Um, I knew we had a lengthy meeting today, so um, you may all remember, we had allocated fifty thousand dollars at annual town meeting for some structural repairs that were probably going to be necessary here at the town hall. Um, which we noticed when the assessors filing cabinet started caving into the, into the basement a little bit. Um, so we did have an engineering company come out and do a, do a bit of work to assess the building and figure out what some of the main issues were. Um, at this point, we need to take that the next step, to have him kind of spell out what the actual project is. So, we can go forward and find a contractor to do the work. Um, we would obviously need to go out to bid for that work. Um, I think what I'm trying to figure out at this point is if he can just give us a ballpark of what the, kind of what the most, maybe put the hierarchy of most critical to least critical and see if he can kind of identify what we're looking at for cost. Um, so we know a little better what we're in for. So, I'm just kinda giving you an update on that. I'm guessing we would have to, that fifty thousand dollars isn't gonna, I don't think gonna go very far after hearing how much building repairs.
No.
So, most of the concern is on the.
So, there were concerns with the, um, underneath the beams, some of them are not quite sturdy enough to support the weight.
They're so close to the roof.
There's some cutouts in the beams that had happened, the foundation has some issues. Um, there's, there was a pretty good list of, of, of items on his, on his list.
It's a whole building.
Yeah, yeah, so, I more just wanted to give you a, an update on that.
You need to keep the, the snow off the, the, off the sidewalk there, you know, cause it's just going right into the building, you know?
We, we do try to keep the snow, the snow removed.
It's, it's tricky, cause I'm sure it comes right off the roof and right down there, you know?
Yep, it sure does.
Not even that side of the building, though, that's the issue, it's the side.
Oh, my goodness, okay, well, I'm sure that is.
I think all the sides had some issues, actually. Um, and I'll share that reporting with you at, at a future meeting, so you can see exactly what it is we're up against. Um, another sort of just an FYI, as we're moving forward, MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant that we've received in the past, um, we're in the process of potentially applying one more time for an action grant, which is to continue the work we had done on the Klessen Brook. Watershed area where there's some concerns with flooding and stabilizing some banks and so forth.
So, then we didn't get.
We did not get it the last time, but we are, actually, we're having a, we expressed interest in doing it again, and we're going to be meeting with um, some of the folks at the MVP program to sort of figure out how to maybe. Sure, sure, win them over. Um, and in the meantime, we are, we were part of MVP one point oh. We now need to be designated as MVP two point oh to, beyond this round of grants, be eligible for any other future grants. This is a much different program, it's, it wouldn't be anything like we've already worked on. We'd be identifying a brand-new project, brand-new priorities, um, we would be, it's a two-year program. Because Buckland needs this, we've been given priority status, which they didn't come right out and say it, but it feels sort of like we're pretty much gonna be a contender for this grant. Um, but it is a two-year grant, we would need to acquire a planning vendor for the first year, there's a lot more community engagement. Um, it's, it seems like it's a pretty, a pretty large amount of, of work. Um, but I think we're confident in going forward with that and up for the challenge. And that deadline is coming up on December tenth, I believe it is, to file, so we're working on that currently. Um, and it's not a grant where the town is gonna have to have any matching funds allocated. It's, it's um, time for those of us who are gonna be working with it. But ultimately, it's, the, the money is, is, is provided for us going forward. So, that is another just update on, on a, on a grant that I'm working on.
Thank you.
And that's all I've got.
Okay.
Perfect. Uh, public comment? Nothing. Um, our next uh, select board meeting will be December ninth at five PM here. I know next month, we are kinda hitting the same way we're hitting at Thanksgiving. Um, whereas our second meeting would be following the week of Christmas.
Twenty-third.
So, it'd be the Tuesday, Christmas is Thursday. Do you guys want to meet on that day? Do you want to try to get a different day? Thoughts?
I may be on my way to Boston.
Okay.
I don't know.
What is our December shaping up to look like?
So, the ninth, we have a pretty busy meeting. We have a, it's not considered a public hearing, but um, Linda Overing is coming back for phase two of the discussion about Kratt and Monroe and Bray and so forth. Um, I feel like there was something else that was sort of earmarked for that. We also potentially have a dog hearing that may be coming up that I've been made aware of. Um, I don't have any of the particulars yet, but I've sort of earmarked it for, for potentially that meeting, but there's a process involved in certified mailings and all that sort of thing. And if I don't get information soon, it may not be feasible to have it at that point.
Can we decide on the ninth if we need to know when we're after? I mean, you know what I'm saying, we don't have to notify them both now for.
Right, right.
You can also even meet that Monday instead of Tuesday.
Yeah. So, give us time to think about it.
Different than what needs to be done, I mean, you know.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
So, we'll leave it as is now, we'll make a determination on the ninth.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan.
We'll be here on the ninth.
Okay.
Sounds good, sounds good.
The only other, I did not add it to this agenda, but um, moonlight magic will be happening on Friday. The town hall will be open, um, the Buckland Rec will be hosting a craft fair upstairs. People can stop in to warm up, use the bathroom.
No free advertising, no free advertising.
It's not free advertising.
And as usual, it's gonna be cold, you're right.
That's right, it's more of a, the town hall is open, if you need a restroom, please feel free to come on by.
Why, why can't we have moonlight magic in the middle of summer?
It's not as magical.
If you wanted moonlight, we'd have to wait until ten o'clock.
They have it over at Buckland Shubert School, it's uh, been very successful the uh, warmer days.
Right.
Let's keep it so they can keep successful.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and have a good night.
So, you didn't bring up Janet Sinclair, though. Energy meeting, E, energy committee?